Oh, there she is.
I'd like to call the June 8, 2020 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Rick Smiley for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I recently learned that our city attorney is not just a man of letters, but he's also a man of cloth. And he has agreed to deliver the invocation tonight. Emmanuel McGirt.
Thank you. Let us pray. Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on each of us. Bring your Spirit from above and breathe on us. Eternal God, we invoke the presence of your Spirit into this council meeting and upon the mayor and the council members, city staff, especially the Greenville Fire Department and the loss of one of its own and members of the public. We are facing difficult times, COVID-19 health crisis, and now the senseless death of George Floyd and other deaths has led to protests in the streets of our city and other cities throughout the nation. Issues of racial equality and social justice often divide us. Therefore, we ask that your Holy Spirit, the breath of life, zoom in, draw near, dwell inside of, and fill us with peace that passes understanding, justice that is love, correcting everything that revolts against love, and love for God and love for neighbor. For Christ's sake and in his name, I pray. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, now I'd like to call on the city clerk for the roll. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels? Councilmember Bell? Councilmember Smiley?
I'm here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a form.
All right, thank you very much. Now we move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening.
All right.
Mayor Connolly and councilmembers, I would just advise and remind council that members of the public have 24 hours to make written comments after any public hearing, and that is in effect because we're having a remote meeting during a state of emergency.
Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Ms. Meyerhofer, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right.
That's number Bell. I second that motion.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Smiley, aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. Now we move on to the public comment period. Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Also, I want to make a reminder too, if there's any discussion during the public comment period that pertains to our budget, please make sure to address that during the public hearing and not during the public comment period. Now, Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Okay, the first speaker that we have registered is Ms. Jasmine Hemby with Black Lives Matter Greenville NC. Ms. Hemby, if you will unmute your mic, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Jasmine Hemby and I'm one of the founders of the Black Lives Matter chapter here in Greenville. And currently, we're advocating for the policies that were sent to you to be pushed, and we believe that it will benefit everyone in the community. We hope to prevent more cases of police brutality and/or hate crimes in our city. Excuse me. I would also like to mention that this will be a great opportunity to show other cities that we can be progressive here in Greenville and that they too should work to have policy reform in their city as well. We believe that change starts at a local level, and hopefully this can break out into statewide and then nationally. We are willing and hoping that we can sit down to discuss these demands and we could come to some sort of agreement. So we understand that we are not lawmakers, so we are looking to add people to our team to accomplish that goal and to address some of the demands that we want enacted. We try to tackle a lot of things that should already be in place, such as training on implicit bias, as well as training on interacting with the LGBT2 community, as well as de-prioritizing minor offenses such as bordering, jaywalking, and disturbing the peace, as well as stop the frisk. So these, the de-prioritizing minor offenses and stop the frisk are often referred to as broken window policing. And this is an issue because it leads to criminalization and overpolicing of communities of color. We are also looking to put in place community oversight. Police usually investigate and decide consequences for other fellow officers, which is a big issue, especially when it's time to hold someone accountable. The civilian oversight would take over some of those roles to remove layers of protection surrounding offices. Of course, there are more policies that were sent to you, and I'm willing to expand more on them at a later date. But again, we hope that we can sit down to discuss this. And another thing that we stress heavily is that this is not a one-time occurrence, but we should all come together to have a healthy relationship between our chapters, the police department, and the city council as well. We have big plans for the future as well to benefit Greenville. In the future, we're going to look into possibly trying to push something to the front of police and reallocate that money into community programs and educate and argue. But for now, that's all I have, and thank you for allowing me to sound.
Thank you, Ms. Hemby. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, our next speaker? I think you might be on mute. Still having trouble hearing you.
Mr. Rixon, I'm sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, your three minutes will start now.
All right, my name's Chris Rixon and I've lived in the Greenville area for most of my life. And tonight, I only have a few comments to make. First, I believe that the city's goals should be to arm our communities with the tools needed for them to thrive, not arming the police with weapons to perpetrate violence. Second, the citywide curfew was a racist ploy to suppress the First Amendment right protesters in the call for justice in our communities. You must all take responsibility as the city government for your decision to criminalize calls for justice, a decision which has placed the city government on the side of white supremacy. I also support the list of community demands that have been shared widely throughout Greenville. This includes community control of the police, calling on GPD to end their involvement in the 1033 program, working with state leadership to establish a civilian complaint review board with subpoena power, and recommending to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners that the Confederate monument be removed. The city government for a long time has failed to act and has been complicit in the injustices that happen in our community. I encourage you to act now, and if you fail or cannot bring yourself to do so, then please consider resigning immediately. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Rixon. Madam Clerk, our next speaker? I think you're on mute again.
Yeah, sorry. Mayor Connolly, we do not have any other registered speakers, but we do have some messages that were submitted to the public input mailbox.
Okay.
And I will read those messages as time allows. Still using the three-minute time limit.
Okay.
All right. So this first message is from Ryan Waddington. Dear City Council, my name is Ryan Waddington, and I am a Licensed Marriage and Family Therapy Associate working at Caronet Counseling East. I'm writing in light of the recent policies that were delivered to the council by our local Black Lives Matters Greenville chapter. I am a white man raised in the South. I've been part of the problem in the past, as have many of the policies that are currently standing. I am the father to beautiful identical twin black boys that my wife and I adopted when they were almost five years of age. They are now 10 years old. They are big, strong boys with a trauma history and big emotions. Sometimes these emotions come out in big ways. I fear that as they are getting older, that they will no longer be seen as cute black boys, but as a threat. I fear that their lives can be taken from them by the police through no fault of their own. As they get older, I cannot be everywhere to protect them. That is why we need your help. We need you to listen to the demands and act on them. I need you to. My son needs you to. Every black man and woman, boy and girl, living in the city needs you to. Not only do we need you to, we are demanding that you do. I'm writing to demand that those policies be heard and granted. For the sake of my children, your children, and every child that lives in this city, these policies must be addressed. We demand that our local police are trained and working with diverse populations and are trauma-informed. Police should have training regarding encounters with minorities, including LGBTQ plus individuals. This training should be done quarterly and include scenario-based training. This training must include proper engagement for any minority group in our area, including racial, youth, transgender, gender nonconforming individuals, individuals who do not speak English as their first language, individuals from other religious affiliations, and individuals who are differently abled, and more specifically those on the autism spectrum. Training must also include such things as implicit bias, procedural justice, relationship-based policing, community interaction, and de-escalation and minimizing the use of force. This training needs to include testing for bias and shoot-don't-shoot decision-making. We are demanding that these policies and trainings be addressed so that our sons, our neighbor's sons, our son's friends, and any EIPOC is not the next victim to police brutality. Now's the time to act. Now's the time to change and change for the better. If you would like to further, if you would like to further conversations on this matter, please reach out to me by email or phone, both listed below. As a trained therapist, I'm willing to offer trauma-informed resources for resilience and training to any and all police officers in our area. Thank you for taking the time to read my email and for working to end racial discrimination and police brutality in Greenville, North Carolina, and around the world. We can make a difference together. My son's lives are depending on it.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington. Madam Clerk, our next email?
This next email comes from Sarah Vanacore, resident of 2201B Doug Dell Drive. Hello. Hello, I'm writing to support the policies that Greenville's Black Lives Matters chapter sent to you, including the establishment of a civilian-led police commission and civilian complaints office, an end to broken windows policing, which often targets minorities and marginalized groups, passing Brianna's Law, which deals with no-knock warrants, and training for all police officers with regard to community interaction and implicit bias. I believe that these measures are a good start in the struggle for racial justice.
Thank you, Ms. Vanacore. Madam Clerk, our next email?
This message is from Ms. Kelly Young. Good afternoon. I'm emailing to express my support of the newly established Black Lives Matter chapter in Greenville, North Carolina, and the campaign to have policies sent to you established in this community. Systemic change must occur at every level. Thank you for your time, Kelly Young.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Madam Clerk, our next email?
This comes from Ashley Cleland. Hello, City Council members. I'm writing to voice my support. My strong support of the local Black Lives Matter chapter is that I am strongly in favor of implementing the civilian-based fight and implicit bias to senior and junior degrees. I would also like to see our local government invest in implicit bias to senior and junior degrees. Transparency and accountability is essential for creating trust and building a community where always being heard, valued, and more, and most importantly, safe. Our black community members and their families have, they bring us so many wonderful things to our community. We are grateful. It could case to the sweet, 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 hopeful bakery for unparalleled quality service and disease before going to the sales. They've invested in us, and it's time for Greenville to invest in them. As an educator, I believe in the ability of people and communities to transform. I believe in Greenville, and we must commit, take action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next email?
This is from Nathaniel Rutherford. Hello, my name is Nathaniel Rutherford, and I am a concerned citizen of Greenville. I want all of Greenville's city's officials to know that I support sleeping changes to the call for, to the Black Lives Matter movement. I fully support the list of demands put forth by the People's Tribunal on Saturday, asking for community control of the police, the end of Greenville's involvement in military equipment surplus programs, and an independent prosecutor for police brutality, informing a civilian complaint review board. I just think you have the best interest of Greenville citizens at heart. Police brutality and the militarization of the police force across the country benefits no one, and it often hurts communities more than it helps. I plead with all of you to consider these changes and any others in the name of peace, equality, equity, and prosperity. In my short time in Greenville thus far, I have enjoyed this town and think it can be something special. But in order for this town to reach its full potential, changes must be made and strides must be taken in order to give everyone an equal opportunity to succeed and live portion lives. Thank you, Nathaniel Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Our next email?
This is from Garrett Hailey. Dear City Council, my name is Garrett Hailey. I'm writing to support the calls. Please recommend a dialogue with the Black Lives Matters movement and support this movement of pride. These common sense policies will not only save lives, but will improve relations between the police and the community they serve. Perhaps that is the heart of what people are protesting. There has been a lot of talk about a good cop recently. I know several, and I want to bring an old cop that I did discuss, who's dating my grandmother. More on him in a minute. But first, I think it's worth defining what it is that makes up a good cop. I think it's fair to say a good cop is one who protects and serves. Who is it they protect? Who is it that they serve? One of the most fundamental principles of American society is that of the individuals who put in positions of power, whether they be in our military, our political leadership, or in the police departments we entrust with enforcing our laws. Serve the people that empower them and not the other way around. If you think we fought our revolution to be free of taxes on T's and stamps, you're sorely mistaken. We fought them to be free of powerful people who believed it was a natural order for us to serve them. Many of the best chapters in American history have since have had reiterations of this point, whether we have been reaffirming this philosophy before ourselves or sharing with the world. I know that for some, the first impulse will be to debate the policies proposed by our Black Lives Matter chapter. I know that for others, the first impulse will be to reject them on their face. If that is your first impulse, my challenge to you is to make one single argument against these policies. Policies drafted by American citizens proposed to their city council, designed only to ensure that their police force is protecting and serving them, to make one single argument against these policies that doesn't also deny this principle that the legitimacy of a government derives from the consent of its people. I'll tell you something, a good cop wouldn't find anything to complain about here. The best cop I know retired to Hawaii specifically so he wouldn't have to wear a shirt again. Despite going shirtless, he always carries a copy of the United States Constitution on his person. The best cop I know was a Marine before he was a cop, serving his country in Vietnam. The best cop I know sees his time as a warrior, and his time as a policeman is mutually exclusive. The best cop I know has a thousand stories from half a century he's been on the floor, with one thread I see between them. He was more than willing to take a bullet for his community than to fire one at it. The best cop I know wholeheartedly approves of the proposal now up for your consideration. Thank you for your time. Let us remember who our police protect, who they serve, and who entrust them with the power to do so. Thanks. Sincerely, Garrett Hailey.
Thank you, Mr. Hailey. Madam Clerk, our next email?
We still have time. I am just going to see if there's anything in our inbox. Okay, yes, we did get one more, and I will read that into record.
Okay.
This is from Madison Tompkins. PJ, I listened to your interview on Community Voices with Jay. While I'm grateful that you agree that changes need to be made, I'm disheartened that the majority of your public comments in the last week have been about property damage rather than lives lost. I have some questions. Are you actively working on a police forum for people to discuss their grievances? If you really believe in making changes, why aren't you joining the peaceful protesters so they know they are supported by their local government? If the newly formed Local Chapter of Black Lives Matter were to hold a formal event, would you support it? Would you attend? What resources are you circulating to local law enforcement? What training do you want to see implemented? Have you heard of the mental health positions some local governments have created for police forces in their cities? How are you discussing race within your home? How will you make sure that the generation you leave behind will do better? How can you support a president who will offer forceful tactics on peaceful protesters for a photo op with a book he doesn't open in a building he doesn't go to when you consistently mention that you're a man of faith? Do you recognize the amount of racism that exists within this very city? Do you understand how it is conscious, passive, and systemic all at the same time? Do you realize that all lives won't matter until black lives are treated as if they matter? It is vital that we understand our privilege and use it to lift the voices of those who have not experienced the same. I look forward to your response, but more importantly, your actions in helping fight racial injustices that affect people every day. You're in a position of great influence, and I'd appreciate it if you used it. Thank you for your time, Patty.
Thank you, Ms. Tompkins. I will say that I have your email. I will respond to those questions that you had sent to me via email.
Okay.
Anyone else? Like to speak or send an email during the public comment period?
And that concludes the email.
All right.
Excuse me, I think that there were some names that needed to be mentioned because the emails were kind of duplicated. Is that in the email you sent us early, Valerie?
What is that?
The email you sent to us about the letters you want to mention the names, so obviously...
Oh, that's actually coming up for the public hearing. That's for the public hearing.
Okay, my apologies. Okay.
No, no problem. No problem.
All right, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Item number one is an ordinance and reimbursement resolution amending the Greenville Utilities Commission FY 2019/2020 budget and various capital projects budgets. Item number two is a grant of sanitary sewer easement for the North State Steel Sewer Extension. Item number three is the purchase of real property for Greenville Utilities Commission Toll Road Gate Station as part of the High Pressure Multiple Gas Facilities project. Item number four is the renewal of the inter-local tax collection agreement between Pitt County and the city of Greenville. And item number five are various tax refunds greater than $100. That's the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Like pull any items?
Ms. Councilmember Smiley, I move we approve the agenda, the consent.
Councilmember Bell, second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Councilmember Smiley, aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
All right, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to new business. I'm going to read the policy for the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those attending to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or councilmembers, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is a distraction and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. And also, in addition to that, I do want to say that pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. You can see the city website for instructions on how to submit comments. And the budget item on the agenda for for the 11th is on the agenda for the 11th, and the council will take action at that meeting. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing this evening is a public hearing on the proposed FY fiscal year 2021 budgets. It will include the city of Rocky Mount, the city of Greenville, including Shepherd Memorial Library and the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, as well as the Greenville Utilities Commission. And I'll turn it over, and Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager Michael Cowan will provide that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will now share my screen.
This is for Greenville, right?
Yes, sir. So the total budget for the city of Greenville for all funds for fiscal year 2020/21 stands at approximately $404.2 million, with the city operating funds coming in at $129,584,573, representing approximately 32% of the overall total budget. Greenville Utilities coming in at approximately $270.5 million, 67% of the overall total budget. And then the Convention and Visitors Authority, $1,333,711. And Shepherd Memorial Library, $2,772,931. If we take a closer look at the city's operating funds, we see that the general fund comprises approximately $82.1 million, that's 63% of the overall total. Some of the other larger funds that we have, city operating funds, consists of the debt service fund at approximately $5.9 million. It's the fund in which we service all the city's outstanding debt. We have sanitation and stormwater coming in at approximately $7.8 million and $7.5 million respectively. And the health insurance fund, the fund to service all the city's health insurance expenses on a claims-made basis, coming at approximately $13.8 million, for again, a total of $129.6 million total city operating fund budget. What we'll do is spend, take a little bit closer look at the general fund budget. It is, as required by state law, a balanced budget, budgeted revenues equal budget expenses. Again, revenues and expenses each coming in at approximately $82,151,742. The preparation of the budget is a three-step process for this fiscal year. It starts with the base budget or beginning budget, and then we took from that the COVID-19 adjustment, both revenue expenses based off of the projected impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Then additional revenue, property tax revenue derived from revaluation at the proposed tax rate to equal the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020/21. This chart right here summarizes both the change in revenues and expenses to comprise a balanced budget. You can see that we started with a base budget of approximately $87.3 million, both revenue and expenses that were balanced. From there, we had COVID-19 adjustments, a reduction of approximately $7.5 million in revenues, and a reduction in expenses of the same amount, $7.6 million to offset that projected reduction. An additional $2.4 million in property tax revenue derived from revaluation of property in Pitt County for this year. Increase in both revenue and expenditures to... Increase in both revenue and expenditures to comprise a complete and balanced budget, proposed budget of $82.2 million. The general fund revenues, the largest components are property tax and sales tax coming in collectively at about 65% of the total. Property taxes, $36.7 million and sales tax coming in at a projected $16.3 million. You can see some of the other larger line items, the utility franchise tax, the tax on natural gas and electricity, state tax, $7 million, and the GUC transfer from GUC at approximately $6.4 million per the charter. On the expense side, approximately 64% of our total general fund budget is invested in human resources, the individuals we rely on to carry out the city functions on a day-to-day basis. $55.2 million, department operations, $6.3 million. Pay-as-you-go capital projects, $4.9 million. Transfers with the vast majority of that being the debt service at 7.2 and other fixed costs coming in at 10.4. And then you have reimbursement from the other funds at $1.9 million. For the look at the COVID-19 adjustments, you can see again, $7.56 million in revenue adjustments. The vast majority of that coming from projected reductions in sales tax dollars, approximately $5.4 million. A reduction in property tax of $700,000 due to a projected reduction in the collection rate. And then you have the various other reductions that are based off of the local economy or based off the level of programming that we're able to provide during this period. Then on the expense side, we have offsetting reductions in personnel of approximately $2.3 million. Operations, $710,000. Reductions in pay-as-you-go capital projects, $3.4 million comprised primarily of reductions in one-year reduction in vehicle replacements as well as facility improvement projects. Transit transfer, a reduction of $787,000 relying heavily on the stimulus funds through the CARES Act that the city is scheduled to receive. Reduction of $102,000 to the Shepherd Memorial Library transfer. A reduction of $50,000 in the Uptown Greenville contract. And then other various fixed cost reductions of approximately $226,000. Must note that there are some very sizable reductions to projects that are included within this budget due to COVID-19. As you can see, a list of those reductions here. And just note also to the public and that as the general fund revenues increase back to their pre-COVID-19 levels, the spending reductions made from these line items will also be restored to their pre-COVID-19 levels. This, you know, must be noted that it might take one year or several years depending on how quickly we can rebound. But the first dollar, any increase in revenue moving forward be used first to restore the budget cuts detailed above. Because many of these reductions cannot be sustained for any amount of a long period of time, one year at best. So we look at property revaluation. The city's property tax base per the county's revaluation that occurred this past calendar year increased from approximately $6.75 billion to $7.59 billion. That is an increase of approximately 12.2%, which is comprised of a 2% increase due to normal and ordinary growth and expansion of our tax base. And then approximately 10.2% increase from revaluation. Our current property tax rate stands at 52 cents and the revenue neutral rate is 47.7 cents. And this is the rate that would produce the same amount of property tax revenue if revaluation had not occurred. And the proposed rate for next fiscal year is 51 cents, a reduction of one cent. And based off of that proposed rate and as a result of the increase in valuation of the city's property, comparison of the market, we would anticipate per this budget, an increase in our property tax revenue of $2.4 million. Note that the increase of $2.4 million is not realized by an increase in the tax rate, the tax rate actually reduced by one cent. The increase in property tax revenue is the result of an increase in the value of real property relative to the market per Pitt County's property revaluation. Again, if you take a look at our property tax rate over the last 20 years, a very, very stable and constant tax rate, even this year remarking a reduction of one cent. And that, for that, both the current council as well as past councils are to be commended with that very, very fiscally responsible rate. If we take a look at the allocation of the additional $2.4 million in property tax revenue that is being realized due to an increase in the property values within Pitt County and City of Greenville specifically. We have a $600,000 increase in street improvement funding that will fund, that will bring our overall funding up to $3.1 million per year, which is an incredible increase from what the city was spending only about five years ago. That will fund on average about 18 miles of resurfacing each year. That new amount of 3.1 million. A $600,000 increase for funding for the build grant projects. As you know, we have received a $15 million federal grant for those projects, the overall total being approximately $24 million. This will provide a match over the six-year period of approximately 3.6 million. We have replacement of public safety radios. Our current supply radios for both our fire EMS and police department have ended their useful life and are not planned to be supported by the provider. So we're looking at a recurring line item for replacement of those radios. IT infrastructure to make sure that we have a very stable infrastructure moving forward. We have $100,000 set aside to be utilized for recovery efforts related to our local businesses, small businesses. A $300,000 contingency for the unknowns that are relative to this budget. And then we have $486,000 in financing for recreation and parks capital projects. Specifically, the replacement of the community pool. We have security improvements and the addition of a teen lounge at the Epp Center as well as advancement of our new adventure park on the north side of the river and looking at amenities in that area as well. If we look at our other city funds, again, they come total approximately $47.4 million budget for next year. The largest component of that coming in the form of health insurance, $13.7 million. And then we have sanitation, stormwater, and it's also worth noting that there is no increase in the monthly curbside rate included in this budget. It will remain at $16 per month. And there is no increase in the monthly rate per ERU. It stands at $5.35 per month per ERU. And what this also represents is the delay by one year of the stormwater infrastructure plan where start included in the following year's budget in 2021-22, we will begin the advancement of that of that plan with an increase, a dollar increase over a four-year period to fund over $25 million worth of capital projects for our stormwater infrastructure. In summary, clearly, the City of Greenville's mission is to provide all citizens and to capitalize all citizens with high-quality services in an open, inclusive, professional manner, ensuring a community of excellence now and the future. That is what we represent. And in both good times and bad times, the City of Greenville's budget must reflect this mission. And we believe as staff that this proposed fiscal year budget does that exactly. The budget provides for the delivery of all the city's core public services, supports all the city council's identified goals for the two-year period, and provides new and expanding funding for several council's key priority areas. And with that, I would ask if you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cowan? No questions for Ms. Cowan, all right. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers to speak for the public comment, but I will check the inbox really quick to see if there's any email comments. Okay. All right, I do not see any comments to speak in support of the budget.
All right.
And we do not have any speakers in opposition to the budget, but we do have some messages and I'm sorry, I'm pulling those up right now.
That's good. So those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. And the city clerk will read the emails that were submitted.
I'm just going to note the time. And I just want to start with, there were quite a few people that had emailed us the same identical message, so I just want to read their names and then I will read their message. This message is from Helena Gunn, Daniel Balterman Hall, Luisa Apia, Tulsi Patel, Natalie Malpass, Lily Malpass, Nathaniel East, Shannon Folsen, and Daniel Kennedy. Dear Greenville City Council Members, my name is Helena Thon and the other names that were mentioned, and I'm a resident of Greenville. I am writing about the Greenville, North Carolina fiscal year 2020-21 budget proposal. I'm asking that the Greenville City Council make more overt and visible commitment to racial justice. I demand that the proposed budget be amended to redirect $24,205,350 away from the Greenville Police Department. I urge you to pressure the city manager's office towards an ethical and equal reallocation of the city's expenditures away from GPD and towards sectors that facilitate the dismantling of racial and class inequality. Research shows that a living wage, access to holistic health services and treatment, educational opportunity, and stable housing are far more successful at reducing crime than police or prisons. The source is popular democracy. As such, I demand more aggressive financial support be directed to those areas. Do not forget our poor communities and communities of color who are disproportionate targets of police violence. Justice will only be served when the police are reformed and this will not be possible until we defund them. Can I count on you to consider an alternative budget that puts a focus on social service programs? Thank you, Helena Gunn.
Thank you to each of those writers of the email.
Next message is from Belinda Ford. My name is Angelica Ford. I am a resident of Greenville, North Carolina, and I'm emailing today regarding the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. I understand that as the budget stands now, the Greenville Police Department will be receiving over $24 million, almost 30% of the total general fund. Moreover, I understand that the budget allocated to the police is more than that allocated to capital improvement, planning and development, public works, recreation and parks, financial services, and human resources combined with $2 million spare. This is also $10 million more than what is allocated to fire rescue, another department that serves its first responders. I'm a proud member of the Greenville community and I believe that Greenville would be a safe place if instead of overfunding the police, you reallocated these funds and put them towards bettering our community, creating neighborhoods, recreation centers, community services, and housing programs. I urge you to reevaluate the proposed budget and spend more money uplifting our community. Sincerely, Angelica Ford.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford. Our next email?
Next email is Ms. Jessica Boland. To whom it may concern, my name is Jessica. I was born and raised in Greenville and I am emailing you today due to some severe concerns I have with the proposed fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Currently, the Greenville Police Department has just under $25 million, an under $25 million budget consisting of approximately 30% of the general fund. Is there a way to get a more detailed breakdown of this budget? I am deeply concerned about a city dedicating that level of money to a police department due to the severe and systemic incidences of police brutality and killings across this country. I believe that this budget allocation does not align with the values that Greenville works to abide by. We have reached a turning point in Greenville and around the country. You must choose to divert funds from an increasingly militarized police force and invest in community education, health, and employment, or we may increase already sizable budgets and escalate the terror Black Americans face in our community. I hope you will choose the former. In a time of national reckoning surrounding race, police brutality, and city-level accountability, I hope to see Greenville emerge as a leader. To reiterate my earlier question, is there a place to see the full budgetary breakdown of the police department's $24,205,350 budget? Sincerely, Jessica Boland.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boland. Our next email?
Next email is from Alexandria Brownstein. My name is Alexandra Brownstein and I am a resident of Greenville, North Carolina. I am writing to express my concerns over the high funding of policing Greenville and the lack of funding for other areas. The fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget allocated 28% of the general fund to police, a massive portion that should not be increased under any circumstances. I'm sure you are aware of the national movement to reduce funding and policing following the deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade, and so many other Black individuals. I urge you to take these calls seriously as an investment into Greenville communities rather than Greenville police that have seriously beneficial impact on crime in the area. As you may recall, with plans for the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, please do not raise the portion of the general fund allocated to police and if at all possible, decrease this portion. Consider the many other areas of the general fund such as public works, human resources, and parks and recreation that could use this funding instead. Or look outside of the general fund to find another part of the town that finds, that needs more funding, as I'm sure they exist. Thank you for your reception of this message and I look forward to seeing how you think more progressively regarding policing in Greenville.
All right, thank you very much. Our next email?
Next email is from Rebecca. Hello, I'm writing to ask you if it would consider moving some funds to the police department for libraries, et cetera. Why or why not? Best, Rebecca.
All right, thank you for that email. Our next email?
Next email is from Lenise Tillery. Hello, city council members. I see the wonderful goals you all have in place, including more resources for pedestrian safety, replacement of the community pool, job creation skills, training, et cetera. These are great goals and I'm excited to see them come to fruition. I'm writing today to urge city council members to cut funding to the police department and reallocate it to other services like Shepherd Memorial Library, sanitation, and healthcare. Just recently, Minneapolis city council members announced their intent to disband their police department in favor of investing in community-led public safety. Progress doesn't happen everywhere all at once, but I urge you all to consider moving in the direction of progress, defund the police. The police department budget makes up about 7% of total funds. I've seen countless examples of unnecessary police presence in Uptown Greenville. Usually on nights, the way is open. The way is a predominantly Black club and bar and on nights that this bar was open with a line down the sidewalk, I always see more police officers than ever. I've watched on the top floor of SubDogs as two to four police officers stood in the parking lot laughing, goofing off and riding in circles with their mopeds, interacting with patron staff, with the patrons and staff of SubDogs. Often, the number of officers is out. Often, the number of officers out is excessive and their presence period is excessive and dollars are being wasted by employing 10 officers in a night when four is more than appropriate, or more commonly in a night where their presence is not needed at all. A reduction in budget is more than appropriate for the police department. In maintaining core public service functions referenced on page 49 of 78 on attachment number one, it is imperative that we hold to, hold fast to a citywide hiring freeze on the police department specifically. With everything that is transpiring surrounding the Black Lives Matter movement, citizens will have a penchant for violence. With white supremacist beliefs or even police officers fine in other cities may seek employment with our police department. This can be dangerous for all citizens. We have to keep an eye on this. Please address this. Public works have seen a dramatic decrease in budget. The sanitation will still need funding attention as the coronavirus is still an issue. Since the state opened up for phase two, we should be allocating money to future COVID-19 endeavors in terms of both sanitation and healthcare to ensure that the low-income communities and communities of color who this virus has disproportionately affected nationally have support. Sanitation and healthcare need more of the budget to commit to keeping Greenville clean and healthy. North Carolina has seen an increase in COVID cases in the past few days, very likely a result of opening business, Memorial Day gatherings, and more. And with more cases in hospitals. And with more cases and hospitalizations, this virus continues to be a threat. We must be prepared this time. These sectors can benefit from the reduction of the police department budget. Additionally, with children being at home constantly, there will be a higher need for outside resources. Events and endeavors at Shepherd Memorial Library, both locations, will be vital to reaching our students and supporting them with additional educational materials. Currently, Shepherd Memorial Library funds make up...
All right, thank you, Ms. Tillery. Our next email?
Next email is from Ms. Samantha McLeese. I wanted to send in some comments to be read during tonight's meeting. As a resident of Greenville since 2014, I would like to voice my support of our local Black Lives Matter chapter and the policy proposals they have sent into the City Council. Systemic racism is and has been an issue for far too long, and steps must be taken to dismantle it now. I would like to also express my disappointment at our local news outlets for the gratuitous focus on the violence that occurred after our demonstration last weekend rather than emphasizing the well-organized peaceful protests that took place. I look forward to the good that our Black Lives Matter chapter will bring Greenville. Although George Floyd and Breonna Taylor's deaths sparked the current outrage we're seeing, we must remember that they are only two pieces of a pervasive and toxic culture of racism and white supremacy that touches the lives of millions every single day. I hope that our City Council will work with Black Lives Matter Greenville to make our city a better place. Samantha McLeese.
Thank you, Ms. McLeese. Our next email?
Um, let me just check the inbox. Okay, so it looks like we do have a couple more. This message, I'll just pull it up, is from Courtney Simone. Dear Mayor Connolly and City Council members, my name is Courtney, and I am a resident of Greenville, North Carolina. I urge you to amend the proposed budget for 2021. In light of the continued devaluation of Black life in this country and the ways we have seen the institution of policing continue to fail Black, Brown, and lower-income communities, I would like to redirect money away from the Greenville Police Department and into social service programs that will benefit public health and our own community directly, especially our communities of color. We are reaching a turning point across the country. In Greenville, I hope we choose to divert funds from an increasingly militarized police force and invest in community education, health, and employment instead, if only to better support the institutions that can address both the cases, both the causes and effects of many of the issues we care about in Greenville. While asking this, I also want to uplift the community demands posted this Sunday. One, community control of police. The community must control and operate any institution that holds the power of life and death over it. Democratically elected community police boards must be developed with the power to hire, fire, discipline, and promote. Two, NGPD's involvement in the 1033 program. The 1033 program transfers excess military equipment to civilian law enforcement agencies. The 1033 program exposes the intensifying domestic militarization and occupation strategy of the US. Three, a civilian complaint review board. An independent CCRB should be established with the power to subpoena and indict and free from all law enforcement. Four, an independent prosecutor for police brutality cases. I would also like to uplift the demand to remove its Confederate monument. Please consider this diversion of investment as well as those demands. Let's not wait until Greenville is filled with tear gasts and rubber bullets, or even until another Black person dies from police brutality. Please act now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next email?
This email is coming from Ms. Anaya Robinson. I am writing in support of Matt Pindusy's list of demands which include from Ani Akata. Our community demands: One, community control of police. The community must control and operate any institution that holds the power of life and death over it. Democratically elected community police boards must be developed with the power to hire, fire, discipline, and promote. Two, NGPD's involvement in the 1033 program. The 1033 program transfers excess military equipment to civilian law enforcement agencies. The 1033 program exposes the intensifying domestic militarization and occupation strategy of the US. Three, a real civilian complaint review board, CCRB. An independent CCRB should be established with the power to subpoena and indict and free from all law enforcement. Four, an independent prosecutor for police brutality cases. District attorneys work directly with the police on a daily basis. They rely heavily on one another to indict, prosecute, and try cases. It's a conflict of interest to have a local DA prosecute police. As a Black woman who was attacked by Greenville Police Department in what Chief Holzman called professionalism during a nonviolent protest that was instigated by the police, I know that police institutions are designed to protect Black and Brown lives. Okay. Dear Connolly, that concludes the messages.
All right, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Seeing that we don't have any other comments, the public hearing is now closed. Open for any board discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Councilman Smiley. There is, I understand that the, that the library can, if we will increase their funding by $17,544, which would still be a substantial cut to their, to their funding from previous levels, they would achieve their, a three-year average for maintenance of effort, and that would enable them to receive, you know, quite a bit more than that in, from state funding. So my, I move that we increase the Shepherd Memorial Library budget by $17,544 with the funds coming from the facility improvement program budget.
This is Councilmember Bell. I will second that motion.
All right. Do you have that, Madam Clerk? I think you're on mute again.
Yeah, sorry. Was that a, a motion to increase the Shepherd Memorial Library fund by $17,000?
$17,544. Moving those funds from the facility improvement program budget.
All right.
I also have a motion that I would like to make. This is Councilmember Bell. I would like to make a motion to increase the Uptown Greenville budget by $50,000 with the funds coming from the contingency fund. This additional contribution is contingent on the city's receipt of a work plan with specific activities and milestones to be completed by Uptown Greenville during the course of the next fiscal year.
I would like to allow that as a friendly amendment to my motion, so that we have one motion capturing both.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Yeah. Councilmember Bell, did you say that was contingent upon them, upon the city receiving a work plan?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, yes, I have it.
Mayor Connolly and council members, Madam McGurk, City Attorney, since the public has 24 hours after the public hearing to make written public comments, I would recommend that council take any final actions on the budget on the, at the Thursday meeting.
They, they can take this motion, right, and make an adjustment, and then take action on the total budget on Thursday, is that right?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, what I, Mayor, what we would do is we would, we would amend the budget ordinance and bring it back per, if these, if these, if this motion is approved, we would adjust the, the budget ordinance accordingly and bring it back to you on Thursday night as amended by these two, by this motion.
So, so just to clarify, we'll provide you with a, with a new schedule that shows, shows the budget with these two changes on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
But you have to take a vote on this motion tonight.
Correct. All right, the motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. I do want to say one thing before we get on the, move forward with the vote. I mean, I do want everybody to keep in mind that, you know, the 51 cent, it may be a decrease, but you're also pulling a significant amount of money out of our local economy. There's a lot of people that are hurting right now financially, and I know that the city's made substantial cuts, but still, there's a significant over, I think it's about $2.4 million of our local economy that the city would be taking on as revenue. So I do urge everyone to, to think about that over the next two days, because this has been a very tough year for many people. We've got businesses that are still not open to this day that depend on paying this, the property taxes, so they're going to continue to struggle to do that. We've got people that have been out of, out of a job for many months, some that have not even been able to get unemployment insurance, you know, so a lot of them are making, playing catch-up right now. So I definitely urge everyone to think about this over the next couple of days before we move forward with this budget. Anybody else have any other comments before we take the vote? Seen none, all right.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Mayor Protim Glover?
Can you hear me? The dog is barking. He's about to be some horse. I am concerned about taking monies out of our budget right at the end before we begin to, before we finalize our budget. The staff has done everything to really streamline this budget, and it's really thing that, if they have already streamlined each budget, each department, then I think it wouldn't, wouldn't be good for us to go over and put them in either further, even though you recommend it where, where it should come from. But I just feel like we're, at this point, right now, where, where the city is, as the city managers and our staffs, assistant city managers, and all have worked on this budget and trying to reduce the budget as much as possible to take care of our shortfalls, I just don't think that it is a good idea for us to get in the budget and add more onto it rather than take more out, because we're gonna, we're gonna be really hurting. And I know Michael, Michael crunches those numbers until he can't crunch them anymore. So I just know that I feel comfortable with the budget that he has presented to us, and so I really think that we need to think about this. Think about this. We have till Thursday night to think about it, and we have till Thursday night to talk to someone about it as to where those funds are going to come from when we are operating on such a stringent-based budget right now.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any other comments? All right. The motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. I will now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover?
No.
Councilmember Daniels? I'm sorry, you're muted.
You hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, that was a yes, your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Smiley, aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Mayor, that's 5-1 in approval.
All right, thank you very much. And just one more reminder, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments. Such comments shall be forwarded to the council, and you can see our city website for instructions on how to submit comments. All right.
Mayor Connolly, I would just ask that you indicate that the, I may have missed this, that the public hearing has been closed as well, so make sure the public hearing is closed.
I did, yeah, I believe I did.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item number six, item number seven is a resolution adopting the program for public information and repetitive loss area analysis, and I'll call on our Civil Engineer III, Daryl Norris, for that presentation. Daryl? Okay, I'm muted. There we go.
Hi, thank you, counsel. Let me share my screen. Okay. So item number seven, we have a resolution to adopt a program for public information and repetitive loss area analysis. These are two documents dealing with our floodplain management program, and they are part of our efforts in our participation in the community rating system. The community rating...
Is anybody maximize the, the presentation?
Is it not?
I think it is, it is maximized on our screen.
Yeah, it looks maximized.
My mistake, thank you.
Okay. So the community rating system is a voluntary incentive-based rewards program that rewards activities performed by local governments, helps reduce and avoid flood losses, and the rewards are that it provides discounts to flood insurance premiums to all of the citizens within the community. The program rates communities from 10 to 1, 1 being the best, with each class being 500 points earned from various activities. Each class represents a 5% reduction in insurance premiums annually for each flood insurance policyholder in the city. The City of Greenville is currently a Class 7, providing a 15% reduction in flood insurance premiums, and we're working to improve that. Part of that is these two documents that we're bringing to you tonight. The first is the Program for Public Information. This is a, a document that puts together all of the things that, many of which we're already doing, of public education and outreach about floodplains, the risk and floodplain management, and puts those into a plan document so that we can better approach the community. We went through a seven-step planning process to identify our, our community's needs, formulate the message and the, and the target audiences, and, and prepare how to implement this plan. Our target areas determined by the committee was a, of course, the special flood hazard areas within the city, repetitive loss areas, which we'll explain in the next portion of this presentation. The shaded X-zone, which is the 500-year floodplain, it's not regulated, but it's right next to the regulated flood area, and then multifamily buildings getting at the rental populations, with our audiences being Spanish-speaking population, elderly population, and then HVAC contractors, as well as real estate lenders and insurance agents that deal with the transfer of property. That's an excellent opportunity to educate folks about floodplains and how it affects their, their property. The Program for Public Information will have an annual review and update by the PPI Committee. This committee is made up of staff and, and public stakeholders, businesses and, and insurance agents, a, will give a status of the projects and the progress toward our desired outcomes and make any changes or adjustments. And then it gets included in our annual recertification for the community rating system. Up to 350 points are possible by having this Program for Public Information. Again, each 500 points is a, is a class and results in another 5% reduction in insurance premiums. The second document presenting tonight is the Repetitive Loss Area Analysis. Basically, what this is, is this is a document that studies those structures within, within the city that have had losses due to flood claims. These are, these are insurance claims due to flood damages. A repetitive loss property has had two or more claims totaling $1,000 or more within any rolling 10-year period, and a severe repetitive loss has had four or more claims or more than $5,000. And a severe repetitive loss uh has had four or more claims or more than $5,000 or two claims that cumulatively exceed the building's value. What the repetitive loss area analysis does is it not only takes a look at those specific buildings that have had claims and losses, but it looks at the areas around those buildings and other similar buildings that have similar risk uh from flooding and analyzes those as well. They may or may not have had claims uh whether they had insurance or not. Uh this document itself is uh potentially worth up to 140 points in our CRS program. Um currently in Greenville, there are 12 uh repetitive loss properties. Uh eight of those are currently insured. Um and you can see on this chart uh the total paid claims for these 12 properties totals almost a million dollars in flood damages. Uh this is, this is a map of the, of the city's uh floodplain. All the, the blue um would be our 100-year floodplain area. And these numbered red marks are the specific repetitive loss areas, uh specifically where these repetitive loss properties are and the, the similar type geographic area around them that may have a similar risk. Um so looking at those, those uh nine repetitive loss areas, um we obviously have the 12 repetitive loss properties, but similar properties in those, in those areas actually total um 48 uh properties. Um the difference in the two charts here is uh flooding can come from a couple different sources. Uh it can come from overbank or riverine flooding. So when your stream actually overflows and it floods uh structures. And that's uh what we normally see or hear about when the river floods. But then we can also have local drainage and stormwater flooding where the uh rain comes faster than our, than our system can handle it. And, and therefore it backs up and causes flooding. And so both of these are equally damaging and um so those are uh considered as well. Um the repetitive loss area analysis also looks at uh what mitigation options there are for these properties. What can we do about it? Um obviously, there's acquisition and relocation, but then other, other potential options are barriers, floodproofing, drainage improvements, and then elevating those structures and of course, insurance. Um you should have the, the documents attached in, in your item and uh the recommendation is city council approve the resolution adopting the program for public information and the repetitive loss area analysis. I'll take any questions.
This is Councilmember Bell, move to approve.
Councilmember Smiley second.
Mayor Conley, I think you were muted.
Thank you. Uh motions been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Alright, thank you very much. Madam Manager, we'll move on to the next item, item number eight.
Alright, thank, thank you, mayor. Item number eight is an amendment of the interlocal agreement regarding membership to the Pitt County Development Commission. And I'll turn it over to City Attorney McGirt.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Uh mayor and council members, this item is an amendment to the interlocal agreement regarding the Pitt County Development Commission membership. Uh the Development Commission is a county board. It consists of 15 members. Uh the county states that the two documents that uh constitute the board uh are in conflict. The city-county uh interlocal agreement provides that the city can nominate two members to the board. Uh the Development Commission bylaws provide that the city can only nominate one member. Uh the county met um on May 4th of 2020, uh the, and the Board of Commissioners adopted a motion inter- um amending the interlocal agreement, reducing the city's membership from two to one. And that is subject to the uh council's uh concurrence, since that is an interlocal agreement between two units of government. And uh the recommendation is to approve the amendment uh reducing uh the city representation um on the Development Commission from two members to one member.
Alright, any questions for Mr. McGirt or any of the staff?
This is Councilman Smiley. Who are our current representatives on that?
The, is one city uh of Greenville representative, and that's Mike McCarty. So the city right now only has one seat on the board, even though the, the document, the agreement says we should have two.
So the other seats simply empty?
Yeah, there, it's a 15-member board, there's one vacancy right now. Um so yeah. With the recommendation is to adopt the amendment, the city could actually fill that seat, but the county in re- in response, since it's their board, could terminate the agreement with the city.
No, I'm not arguing for that. I just want to make sure that was, we weren't eliminating a seat somebody was sitting in.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions?
This is Councilmember Bell, move to approve.
I second it, Meyerhoffer.
Alright, motions been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Meyerhoffer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh we'll move on to item number nine, Madam Manager.
Thank you, mayor. Item number nine is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 11 to the 2019-2020 City of Greenville budget um and the Capital Projects Fund. And I'll turn it over to Financial Services Director Byron Hayes.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Evening.
Can you all see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Alright, this is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 11. Uh Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 11 includes adjustments to the General Fund, the Fleet Maintenance Fund, the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund, and the Enterprise Capital Projects Fund. Uh breaking down the amendments, um reconciling the General Fund departmental budgets uh for the FY 1920 year designing funding for change orders to the Town Creek Culvert project from revenue received from GUC. Uh increasing the fleet revenue for costs related to increased solid waste vehicle maintenance costs. Appropriating fund balance within the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund to close out the West Side Park project. As well as closing out and consolidating various capital projects within the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund in preparation for year-end. And as a result of these amendments, the City Greenville Operating Fund sits at under $37 million. And staff recommends approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 11 to the City Greenville Operating Budget as well as the Capital Projects Fund. Any question?
Alright, any questions for Mr. Hayes?
This is Councilman Smiley, I move to approve.
Councilmember Bell, second.
Alright, Councilmember, motion been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Alright, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the review of the June 11th, 2020 city council agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, mayor. At the June the 11th meeting, the council will consider the following items: um appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. We've got Board of Adjustment, um Councilmember Smiley?
Uh I'm, I have a nominee, but I don't have a talent bank form for him yet, so I'll forward that to council in the next few days.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Did you repeat that? Sorry, I didn't quite catch it. What's my nomination?
Uh Board of Adjustment. This is for Ann Bellis's seat. She is eligible to be reappointed.
Okay. I would like to uh reappoint her. I just need to confirm uh with her that she would like to continue.
Okay. Um next, we've got Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Uh I'll continue that one. Uh can, is there a um, a specific qualification for that particular member?
Um I will go back and I'll check that and I'll send that out to the council.
I know some of those, uh some members of the EAC require a particular qualification or background, so.
Yeah, they're pretty specific.
Yeah.
Um
Thank you.
The next is the Greenville Utilities Commission. That's for Mayor Conley.
I'm gonna continue that and it's just, I just want to make sure Mr. Darden wants to continue to serve.
Okay. Um next is Housing Authority, and it's for the resident council seat. This um is occupied right now by Jamelle Blunt. And uh Councilmember Daniels, I have heard back from um Mr. Wayman Williams. And he said that the council did move to nominate Mr. Blunt to serve an additional term.
Right.
Alright, is that it?
Okay. Um Human Relations Council, Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
I will continue those.
Okay. Um the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, um Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Uh I'll continue that, but I uh might get back to you soon on that one.
Okay. Um Planning and Zoning Commission, um I think Councilmember Smiley, you've got a, a recommendation?
Yeah, I, I was going, since this is an open council appointment, I was gonna recommend we reappoint the incumbent. And I'll, I'll make that motion next Thursday.
Okay. Um and that's for Max Joyner, the third seat. And um Mayor Pro Tim Glover, you do have an appointment on that board as well?
Okay, I plan to appoint Alan Thomas.
Okay. Um TCRC, Councilmember Bell?
I'll continue, please.
Okay. Recreation and Parks, Councilmember Bell?
I'll continue that one as well.
Okay. And Youth Council, Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Youth Council, I will continue that. Cassandra usually wait till she gets, the kids is coming back to school. So I'll just wait on that one.
Alright. Mayor Conley, that concludes the list of appointments.
Thank you very much. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Other appointments um, um the council will consider will be appointments to the Greenville ENC Alliance Board on Thursday night. Now, um we'll get to um the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is a contract award for professional services for design, right-of-way construction engineering and inspection and grant reporting on the build grant. Old business will include the consideration of an ordinance requested by John F. Moy Senior Heirs to rezone 15.0936 acres located south of Greenville Boulevard between Allendale Drive and Dickinson Avenue. Extension from RA 20 to RA 6A RU, restricted residential overlay. The council will also hold a series of public hearings that will include the following items: um public um an ordinance to annex Gray Fox Run, phases three and four, involving 5.004 acres located at the terminus of Fox Den Way. Item number six is an ordinance to annex North Creek Commercial Park Lot 8 involving 2.866 acres located at the southeastern corner of the intersection of Old Creek Road and North Creek Drive. Item number seven is an ordinance to annex Savannah Place, Section 2, Phase 2, involving 6.691 acres located at the current terminus of South Bridge Court. Item number eight is an ordinance to annex West Arlington Commercial Park, Section 1, involving 23.092 acres located at the current terminus of Gabriel Drive. Order, ordinance number nine is an ordinance to annex, sorry, public hearing number nine, is an ordinance to annex 320 Enterprises LLC involving 8.2917 acres located at the southeastern corner of the intersection of North Highway 33 East and LT Hardy Road. Item number 10 is an ordinance requested by 320 Enterprises LLC to rezone a total of 8.2917 acres um from general business in Simpson's jurisdiction to general commercial um in the city's um jurisdiction for 3.2917 acres, which is track one. And from general business in Simpson's jurisdiction to office residential OR in Greenville's jurisdictions, five acres of it, which is track two for the property located on the southeastern corner of the intersection of North Highway 33 East and LT Hardy Road. Item number 11 is an ordinance requested by East Carolina University to rezone a total of 19 acres in the area generally bounded by West 10th Street, South Washington Street, West 12th Street, West 13th Street, and the Coastal Seaboard Railroad from IU, which is unoffen- unoffensive industry, to R6, and R6 Residential High Density and CD Downtown Commercial Friends to MUI, which is mixed-use institutional. Item number 12 is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Depart- Services Department to amend the city code to add a multifamily option to the medical, general, commercial, and medical-heavy commercial zoning districts. Item number 13 is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the city code by creating a new commercial, I'm sorry, a new recreation and sport hunting overlay. And item number 14 is a resolution to adopt the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. For those items, items five through 14, the council will hold public hearings, mayor.
Thank you.
Then the council will have um two other items of business. The first will be consideration of the ordinance to adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget for the City of Greenville, including Shepherd Memorial Library and the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority and Greenville Utilities Commission. And then item number 16 will be a discussion of the out- of outdoor dining. And mayor, that is the um June 11th meeting.
Alright, thank you very much. Move on to the uh city management's report.
Um thank you, mayor. Um this evening, I would just ask the council, as, as all, everyone in the community, to please keep our Greenville Fire Rescue Department and their thoughts and prayers this evening and over the coming days. Um um they're, they've, they've lost one of their own and these are very difficult days for them.
Alright, thank you very much. Now move on to comments from the mayor and city council. Let's start with Councilmember Litchfield.
Thank you, mayor. Um no comment.
Alright, move on to Councilmember Smiley.
Thank you, mayor. I have no comments.
Alright, move on to Councilmember Bell.
I have no comments.
Alright, Councilmember Daniels?
I also would like to um give condolences to the Greenville um Fire Department on the loss of one of their own. And I'd also like to um, you know, our city's been through a lot this past week or so. And I'd be amiss, remiss if I would not um mention that. I'd like to thank all our community leaders that came out when they were called. I wouldn't mention names, but so many came out. And I think that was a wonderful testament of the leadership in our community. I also um had the opportunity to go to Sycamore Hill Gateway Project this week. I um, as I went down there, I'm one of the few or many people who are very fortunate that I got to sit at the feet of my great-grandmother who lived at the pound of the iron. One of the things that my grandmother always taught us was the importance of education. She taught us things that she never had the opportunity. She taught us things that she never had the opportunity to do. She never had the opportunity to vote. Eventually it came, but it was a long fight for her. And I just want people to understand, the things that our grandparents taught us, the narrative has changed. You know, we're teaching our children to just come home alive. And that is very, it's very sad, it's very unfortunate. It's something that we've got to change, and we've got to change as a community. I've attended a lot of meetings this week, and there's a gentleman by the name, a young man, very young man, by the name of Eric Gilbert. And he reminded us that I think for last, the community leaders and the police department worked together to ensure that no one was hurt. And if we can do it that one time, we can do it on an ongoing basis. Moving forward, we're gonna have to have some difficult conversations, but we're going to have to have them. Everyone is important. All lives do matter, but black lives matter too. And we have to let our community realize that and know that and support one another through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Should say Councilmember Daniels, excuse me. Alright, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
All set, Mayor, thank you, no comment.
Alright, Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Okay, I'd like to ditto a lot of things that Councilmember Daniels talked about. And to say that we as a city need to come together and make everybody feel like they belong in Greenville, and that they're not, you know, Greenville is a great city. I've been living here for fifty-three years, since I got married. My husband grew up in Greenville. He grew up in the West Greenville area. So there is a lot to learn from individuals who we think are bad people. If we just take the time to sit down and listen to them, then we would be able to introduce their feelings into our city planning as we plan. A lot of people calling for defunding police departments, and I don't think that is a solution. Funding police departments, I think that the issue is, is weeding out the bad. Don't wait till someone have forty-four counts filed against them and they literally kill someone. You're talking about a supervisor supervising officers and telling them what to do that actually kills someone himself. Let's call it like it is, it was pure murder. Because if you take the breath out of someone to the point that they cannot breathe, then you murdered them. And it was totally unnecessary that this happened. And, you know, I have two sons that don't live in Greenville, but one lives in Maryland, one lives in North Carolina in Raleigh. But, you know, I fear every day as a black mama, whether I will hear from my kids or whether I will hear from their spouses telling me that they've been killed unnecessarily. And I can say this probably for every single black woman in the City of Greenville, feel that way. We love our children, we care about our children. There are some kids that are misguided, but we have to put things in place and work with people in the community. And we can eradicate a lot of the problems that we're having in Greenville. Just, just to simple, you know, as the kids grow up, they need to be in an environment where they're loved, but a lot of them aren't. And I know that you may say that this is not a city council problem, but it is, because it's Greenville. It's a city that we love. And the people in it. I don't know about everybody else, but I love all people. Race, creed, or color does not matter to me. As long as we can get along, that's fine. But if we don't get along, I know how to cut you off, I don't have to be ugly to you, I don't have to do anything to you, I can just cut you off and say, this is it. So we need to Greenville, because we have had people killed in the custody of police officers. Matter of fact, two persons. And we really need to look at these things, because, I mean, the medical examiner's report was totally different from two renowned doctors who this, this, just, his information was awful, it was horrible. It was written so that the person wouldn't get in trouble. And that's what we are having, that's what we're dealing with. But until we become a city, we are going to continue to see riots, all kinds of things. I hope that we don't. I really do hope that we don't. But one day, we may have to face it. But before we have to face it, Greenville City Council, let's get together and talk about it. We cannot settle problems without talking to each other. I cannot tell you how my community feel without talking to you. I love every one of you up there, and our city staff, and our, all of you. I love you all, our management staff, everyone. But we cannot let something go unnoticed that will happen in our city. I saw that the Black Lives Matter sent a lot of letters, and that's their job. They are not violent organizers. They are non-violent people. And I saw in my text that they protected the police chief and some officers. So there are good people. It's just a few people who come out with the mind that they're just gonna riot and tear everything up, and there's people that's gonna come out and say, no, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna march peacefully. I'm sorry I haven't been there to attend some of those marches and some in the court, on the courthouse steps. I saw my minister praying on courthouse step, a lot of you may know her, Dr. Angelina Brinkley, that was the city's procurement officer for years until she retired. So we have to, and I'm not preaching to you, because I don't want you to think that every time something happens, black people wanna fuss about it. I'm not fussing, I'm begging, and I'm saying to my city council members, who I love dearly, let us sit down and talk about how we can make changes that would make Greenville better. Thank you, I love you guys.
Alright, we love you too, Mayor Pro Tim Glover. Thank you very much. Finally, I want to end too by saying, you know, what took place up in Minneapolis with George Floyd was awful. It's one of the worst things I've ever seen. You know, I think that we can take this opportunity to make our community a better place. I think this is a way that we can improve community relations. But it's a matter of us working together and developing policies and procedures that show equality for everyone. You know, I think that Mayor Pro Tim Glover and Councilmember Daniels really hit on that. And I will, I'll quote, Councilmember Daniels, I read one of your posts today, and I think one of the most frustrating things is that, you know, we want to make change, you want to make it really fast, but I think you had a post up there that says it takes time, and this is gonna take time. You know, I know the total outcome is gonna take an extended period of time, but we can start those discussions, and we can start the process now so that that time limit is to a minimum as much as possible. I do want to say thank you to all those people that were out that were protesting peacefully this last week. There was, just about every one of the protests was peaceful, you went out and were able to express your opinion, did it peacefully, and I think that us as community leaders, we heard that. I think we understand that you want to see change, and, you know, we're willing to work with you. I think we want to set up public forums where we can have your voices heard and be able to start that process. I also want to say thank you to the Greenville Police Department and all the neighboring law enforcement agencies that helped us out on Sunday night. I thought it was incredible to be able to have twenty-four agencies help us out and come together as a region. You know, for the betterment of all of eastern North Carolina, it was wonderful to be able to get the Pitt County Sheriff on board, to be able to help us out, and be able to make phone calls to different people throughout the region, saying, I've already talked to your sheriff. I think that shows the collaboration that we need to take when we have discussions on how we bring our community together and develop those policy procedures to make our city a better place. Also, I want to say thank you to all the community members that were out there that were working to deescalate the problem on Sunday night and continued to work the entire week. Many of you went out and didn't know what to expect, but you went out there for the sole purpose of making our community a better place. Also, I want to say thank you to all the community members that were out there that were helping to clean up on Monday morning. I saw many people out throughout the Uptown District just helping clean it up, and just because they love our community, they wanted to help out, so thank you so much for that. And then finally, I do want to say, please keep the members of GFR in your thoughts and prayers. They lost one of their employees, one of their brothers, one of their family members yesterday in an unfortunate accident. And they're grieving right now, somebody that was part of their family. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they continue to search for that individual. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Councilmember Bell, so moved.
Councilmember Glover, second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk for the vote.
Valerie, you're muted.
Sorry, trying not to bother anybody with my typing. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Mayor, that's six zero in approval.
Alright, thank you very much. We are officially adjourned. Everybody have a good night.